Kind of opaque process.
Okay, thank you.
The next one was basically some parts of the general planning concepts were updated, some were not. Some part of the design concepts were updated, some were not. Why is that? And I'd say that some sections were not changed because no changes were necessary or they weren't recommended to be necessary and staff didn't believe that they were any necessary. And then we did make some changes to the sections, specifically the signage section. After your last meeting, we did make some changes to that and they did show up in the Word document. We only tackled those that were outdated though. We did not feel like we got a real clear direction on the edge or the edge mounted signage, which I'm gonna push tonight on. And so we didn't make changes for edge mounted signage, but we did go ahead and crack that section up after your direction from our last meeting. This was, I think there may have been, when you opened the Word document, you had to turn on track changes to see the track changes. And so there was a question about why the signage was not changed after we had been given direction. And so this some clarification and we'll go through those exact items that were changed shortly. This was a good question. Didn't understand what the colors meant in this figure. And that's excellent commentary. All figures really need to have a legend. The yellow is commercial properties that are in the overlay. The green are properties that are in the overlay, but because they're not commercial in nature, they are not affected by the overlay. The final question was, is there a Georgia West corridor master plan prepared by ASD as mentioned in the document? And it occurred to me, it used to be on the cover of the document. We removed it and so we need to put it back in. But here it is. It is only the, I would say, what would you call that? The north side of 54. And it is all developed today. So again, when this plan was done, that property wasn't all developed, but today it is. So let's go ahead and dive in to our document. As you know, there are four parts of this. The first part, and we have to do this because it is an ordinance type. We have to explain why we're doing, creating the ordinance. So we didn't make any changes to part one. Part two, what we did was we took the credits that were on the original front cover of the document and put them here in the origination section. But other than that, we made no changes. This talks about the intent, purpose of the ordinance, why we're doing this. If I get too fast, y'all, slow me down, 'cause I've been looking at this for a while. So some things may not occur to me. So then in chapter or part three, we really jump into the planning concepts. The first, 3A was just an introduction general and 3B was about intersections and access, curb cuts. We didn't make any changes to those, again, because the property is developed and we didn't want to make any changes where it wasn't necessary. 3B also talked about, oh, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself, inter parcel access. 3C, one and two, we did not change. This is all about where the building is placed on the property. We felt like that was still very applicable come redevelopment. We want things to match with what is out there today. Nor did we make changes to 3C2, but I went ahead and clipped this and put it up on the slide. And I am sorry, it's small. This, I wanted to show you that what this talks about is it establishes a minimum 30-foot wide landscape buffer along 54. But then 3C3 mentions that, the first part of it says there should be, no building shall be within that 30-foot buffer. But then the very next sentence says that awnings, canopies, and other architectural features may be located within that buffer as long as they do not encroach into that buffer. It was confusing to us. And so we eliminated it. Clearly, I think the intent is no structures within that 30-foot landscape buffer.
What about the, that's the sentence before the awnings, so these spaces shall be used for outside dining, seating, or entry?
We can add that back in? You mean that you want the buffer to be used for?
Well, I mean, it just seems like currently there are some businesses that are encroaching on that 30-foot buffer. If you look at like the south end of 54, there are some outdoor seating areas, I guess, that are pretty close to the street.
Yeah, the Froyo's and Vino's is one.
Yeah. So it just, it seems like it's odd to take that out now when those spaces are, I would say they're relatively popular.
So what was confusing to us about this language was it says, "These spaces."
Yeah, it should be, it should be more clear there.
Shouldn't it just say, "This space"? Because there's only one 30-foot landscape buffer.
Yeah, like this, this 30's foot buffer.
Shall be.
Can't, maybe, may be used, yeah. Because if you say shall be, then it's gotta be used.
Right, okay.
And I guess, Robin, that's a good kind of segue to a question that I had and maybe I should have asked it at the very beginning. But so looking at, and it's, I guess it's more of a policy and procedure standpoint and it kind of ties in with the question. You know, with the existing buildings and the existing businesses we have, if you look at what's currently there along 54, I would say pretty much everything, quote unquote, everything, is up to a more modern design standard. Probably except for maybe one business, maybe two. Of course, we have the old gas station, which is the liquor store there that I would say probably more than anyone is not within the character and design style of the other businesses. So from a update standpoint, how does this update eventually get flowed down to existing businesses? You know, is this something that they would then have to comply with? Is this something as they are upgraded or updated, then they have to comply with the new requirements and things?
Well, and there's two answers. So the first one is, we're not making any changes in this document that somehow makes what is out there illegal or non-conforming. So they still comply with the ordinance, with this document. If in the future they want to change, like that NAPA, which in this case it doesn't comply. But if they wanted to change, then they would have to come into compliance with this.
Any change or is it like a dollar amount?
Any, well, okay, I see.
That's the next part of my question.
Legally non-conforming uses can repair themselves and maintain themselves up to 50% of their depreciated value, which is determined by the tax assessor.
Without coming to the city?
Well, I mean, if they have to get a building permit, that's how we track their, this amount. They can't grow and expand at all though. So if they wanted to add.
The building's footprint.
Right, right. They wouldn't be able to do that without coming into compliance with this ordinance.
And I don't want to really go back to 3B, but I do have a question on 3B. And it actually is the circulation inter parcel access. And I'm thinking more of the access, kind of the alley behind Schlotzky's and behind that whole section where it ties into Macduff and then ties into where, you know, Walmart and Home Depot is. Or our areas like that. And I know we're looking at inter parcel where, you know, the Take Five's gonna go and things like that. How is that regulated? Is that, that's not, that's not a city street? Is it, is that maintained by the city or is that private?
That's a private street.
And I'm just wondering because, you know, the addition, I mean, we're putting design guidelines in. And how, and I guess this is tied into 3C when I have some questions concerning some of landscaping and more specifically around Home Depot and things like that. Putting speed bumps in, things like that, do they have to come to the city to get any type of approval or let the city know the traffic or public works that they're doing this?
So this ordinance is the only thing that we have that requires that inter parcel access. And it doesn't specify anything about speed bumps or anything like that. So they don't need to come to the city in order to put speed bumps up if they want to do, but they do have to keep it open. And they do, in fact, they do have to allow it to provide access to other parcels in the area. And I know that they have questioned that before, but because it's written in this ordinance, we're able to enforce it.
Is that something that we need to take a look at? I mean, I don't want to add undue regulation on top of things, but you know, since we're looking at this, is that something that we should take a look at? I mean, the last thing we want is somebody to go in, number one, not have a safe thoroughfare and people zipping through. So I understand that. But the second thing is, we don't want it to be a washboard where every little step down the road, you hit a speed bump, you hit a speed bump, you hit a speed bump. Is that something we should take a look at? Do we need to take a look at it?
There is a speed bump policy in the city and I don't know it off the top of my head, I'm afraid. I do know that it requires monetary contribution from the property owner in order to install them if they want them. But I just, I don't know. There is something out there already that we have. I just don't know exactly what it is.
I don't know if, you know, this would be referenced from there to here or from here to there if we're making, you know, recommendations or design guides where it would tie back in and say, hey, you know, for this, if there is anything like that, refer to this.
In fact, I've done that, you'll see in the lighting ordinance. When we've got ordinances, I like to refer to them so that somebody reading it for the first time knows where to find it. So we can recommend adding cross-reference language to the cities.
And I'm used to doing the same thing. I've been on multiple architectural control committees for HOAs and that's how we tied everything together was, you know, the guidelines and then you had your design standards. So, and that's, like I said, that's what some of my questions are.
And so is this specifically the speed bumps?
Well, I guess it really goes to kind of anything like that.
Traffic calming is what it.
Traffic, traffic calming. You know, and like I said, I think we get to 3C more of the landscaping and things such as that. You know, that kind of ties into the same thing is that, you know, line of sight. You know, you can't have trees, shrubs, signs, whatever, within the line of sight. And how are those areas? And again, I'm kind of tying it back into Home Depot. The shrubs are very high. People have to pull out within the street even though that's a private drive. They still have to maintain it. They still have to meet the requirements of the city for, or the county or the state for line of sight for safety. And how is that kind of regulated also and enforced, more enforced than regulated?
I'm glad you brought up, and I know you'll bring it up again.
I said, it's further down, but.
But that's actually something we can send code enforcement out to. I just made my note.
That's what I figured it would be.
Because we've done that in other parts of the city where you can't see the oncoming traffic. We've told them they need to come out and fix that.
And I, like I said, I guess that's, like I said, what I was trying to tie together is that how does this flow down? How is it enforced? You know, and I think any opportunity we have to tie it back into a city policy, that's what we should do.
Okay.
Very good. We'll do that. And hey, I just have a quick question. Sorry to go backwards again, but just under 3B point one, like where it mentions that, you know, designed in accordance with current Peachtree City and Georgia DOT specifications. Do you guys get notified when Georgia DOT changes a specification? Or like, how do you know if they change?
There's a permitting process and so they have to go, they have to get that permitting approved with GDOT and they then submit that approved permit and design with their plans to us. And that's exactly what happened with the Take Five was GDOT said, "We actually don't want you to put this driveway within five feet of an existing driveway. Please combine the driveways and, oh, by the way, here's the design." And so that's kind of comes down to us.
You kind of find out on a case by case basis.
Yes, exactly.
That was my question, okay.
So we are in 3C. Let's go, we just talked about the conflicting language in the front yard setback.
Can we go back to that really quick?
Yes.
Just, you know, for the, I think there might be a discussion here. I don't know if my fellow commissioners would agree, but you know, I don't think it's appropriate to use the entire 30-foot section for this outside dining or seating. So maybe we can specify like 15 of the 30-foot section may be used for dining, seating, or entry courts.
The 15 feet closest to the.
Yeah, closest to the building. I would imagine there's also like a GDOT rule for nothing can be right on the curb, but I don't, I don't know. No?
I know if it's outside the right of way, they do not, that's why the right of way is as big as it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so is 15 feet seem like, seems like a very reasonable size for a dining area? Think about, I mean, that's larger than my dining room. I think you could fit some nice sized tables there and be still able to walk around.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay. 3D1, we made a minor change. There was a "that" instead of a "than". It said, "At a minimum no less than four spaces per 1,000." So that was a minor editorial. Then we didn't make any changes to 3E1, which is a general statement about open spaces.
Can we go back really quickly to 3D1? For a city that's very obsessed with golf carts, I'm surprised not to see any golf cart parking language in this.
We don't have any golf cart parking language in any of our ordinances, which is a problem and, in my opinion, I think in, from staff's point of view, is something that we want to bring up in the, when we do the UDO. I think people would be surprised at how little discussion of cart parking or any cart facilities there is in our ordinance. So my preference would be to do it through that process. And that way, it's, you know, all the ordinances, as long as whichever one is most strict or more strict is the one that applies. So if we get the UDO and we fix the cart parking through that process, then it will apply to here as well as everywhere in the city. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's come up before, is that it's always been a nicety if a business has added in cart parking. And I think, I could see it being a possible issue when you're looking at the number of spaces required for a business. And now do you say, well, you have to have X number of golf carts? Does that in addition to, or does that take away from? And, you know, I mean, I don't think we could.
It's a broader discussion too, because that was hoping to have through the UDO is because parking has really changed. You know, when these ordinance was, were written 20 years, we were in the heyday of big boxes. And you just don't see those being built anymore. In fact, you see them being emptied. And so what was designed to address those kinds of needs, nowadays, we've got, we're having restaurants go to double drive-through lanes and losing parking because they don't need it. People aren't coming in the restaurant anymore. And then on the opposite side, we're dealing with, medical institutions are now really organizing so that they've got people coming in every 15 minutes. And so they need more parking. So we're starting, we're seeing some changes in society dealing with parking. And I think that would be the right way to look at it is through that process. Okay.
So when will the UDO be completed, to set curiosity?
It is kicking off very shortly, in the next month or so. And they should be a 12 to 18 month process. I'm pushing our consultant to be done. I would like to be done by December. That's my, nice to be done by date.
Could we put something in this, while we're looking at it, put something in the overlay and just say, "In no event should it conflict with any."
Which would, we could do that.
Because, you know, from my perspective, if there's changes within the next 12 months and, you know, we do nothing and we wait, then we kind of, we miss the boat in terms of getting potentially golf cart parking and into a new development.
There's still the opportunity of you all serve as the conceptual site plan. And that is how these golf cart parkings have happened before, is sort of through that informal, that discretionary power that you guys have. You know, we just went through a Take Five oil change. Staff didn't really recommend golf cart parking in that because it's not quite the market that we're looking for. But if something were to come up, like a new restaurant, right off the golf cart path, AKA McAllister's, then we have brought that up to the commission at that point.
That makes sense. Yeah, I mean, I like, I like the idea of keeping it as clean as possible. So, yeah.
Okay, so then if we're, no changes to 3E1, which was a general statement. 3E2, there was some reference to meandering sidewalks. And that's a very 1990s thing to do. Nowadays, people, if there's meandering sidewalks, what you see is what we call a ghost path, running straight through it because people, the shortest point A to B is a straight line. So we got rid of meandering there. Changes to E3, 3E3, site furnishings. There was, at the very beginning, there was a should statement about outdoor seating, trash receptacles, bike racks, and other furnishings should be provided. We feel everywhere else it was a shall statement. There's, so we changed that from a should to a shall. Then there were specific recommendations for a very specific bench and a very specific garbage can. We felt like that was a little stymied, some creative. And there's some really cool site furnishings out there. Art, art that is also benches. Art, art that is also benches. And, and so we just thought that removing that was, um, would help have some more creative uses. And then we even added some updated pictures. Oh, I meant to cover, in the garbage receptacle, we did add language that says, um, "All garbage receptacles should have covered lids with access from the sides." That, this is direct result of the vultures. We are just really dealing with vultures and the only way, you can't, you know, they're protected species. And so the only way to encourage them to move on is to remove their food source. And so this is one way that we can do that.
And, and I think it's good, Robin, and you don't want to box in creativity. But I had lunch over Trilith last week and just kind of walking up and down. I mean, thoroughfare there and, you know, they have some, some interesting areas. But they also look like somebody just put a couple chairs here and, and they don't match anything. And then a couple chairs over here and a couple. And my, my son actually mentioned they had the big gas fire pit thing right there. And there was a little boy like running over there to go see it. And it's like, okay, well, that's a nice feature, but it's not really a safe feature sort of thing. So I, I do like the complimentary, um, that, you know, it, it at least meets the character of, of the business or, or something like that, for we just don't have a hodgepodge of just, you know, here's a blue chair, here's a red chair, here's a pink chair, here's a, cause then it starts just getting messy.
Looks like grandma's kitchen.
It, it looks, yeah, yeah. And I hate to say that, that's, that's the way I kind of felt. There, there were a couple of things there and I'm like, okay, I like that area over there. This doesn't really go with anything. You know, it'd have been nice if they were, so I think we need to just watch that and-
That's where that complimentary to the style and character.
Leave it, leave it open, but we still have to keep it tied in a bit.
Yeah.
Yep.
Some of that discretionary language, okay.
In the first paragraph of three E two, site furnishings.
Before, before we move, can I, can I ask a question?
Three E three?
About changing the should to shall statement. How do we interpret that when reviewing a site plan? Is, is the, is the shall statement met if somebody just puts out the trash receptacle in the plan?
That's a good point.
Does that, does that meet the requirement that we're putting forth?
You've got to have all of those things.
All of them.
Well, it says, it says, "Outdoor seating, trash receptacle, bicycle racks and other site furnishings shall be provided throughout the development." So what, what's other site furnishing?
I would think that it would be what's appropriate for that particular use, for that particular development.
I'm glad you said that, cause I'm thinking about take five. And nothing really makes sense there except a trash receptacle and maybe the bike, bike racks.
Bike racks, bike racks, because there are folks who use bikes to get to work.
Except it said should when we reviewed their plan. And they didn't offer a bike rack, so.
And so we weren't able to require it.
Exactly. So I'm, I'm just confirming that.
And other site furnishings appropriate for the development, right? Or something like that.
Where was that? There it is, okay. Making sure I write this down.
And then my, 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 my question to the, to the group was, the next sentence, that these furnishings should be of uniform design and color and should not include advertising. I'd like it to say shall not include advertising.
Okay.
You know, I don't, I don't see a lot of advertising on trash bins and benches in Peachtree City. And I think it should stay that way.
Yeah, we don't want the bus stop benches.
Yeah. I think it should, that's that second should and that second sentence should be changed to shall.
Shall. Okay. And then three, four E, the next section. Again, we didn't make any changes except for removing the very specific bike rack manufacturer requirement. This is that ribbon rack that bicycle advocates don't like anyway. And again, trying to not stifle some really cool creative option, options out there.
So this, this section's great to see, right? Especially in light of the presentation we had last, last meeting. But that gentleman was correct that a lot of the, those businesses didn't comply with
Right.
the requirement of this particular, you know, guideline.
Well, and that's where that should, you know, just making that one change from a should to a shall.
Can, can, can we, so, so, so that, that applies going forward then?
Right, right.
That they've got to have bike parking, okay.
Yep.
Got it, okay.
So Robin, is there, is there any opportunity in city-owned areas? Whether it be tennis center, whether it be over by the, by the bridge on the western side entrance into Peachtree City? Are there any opportunities to, to add anything to that such as bike parking or, or anything like that? Even though it's not right in a business, it's right there so they can-
Something you just said, yeah.
Park and, and walk, because, I mean, again, to try to wait till somebody develops something new. I don't foresee a lot of that happening in this area anytime soon. So to really get things out there like that, is there an opportunity to, to do something as a city on its own?
There is. I think it would require folks, whoever, to really look at the right places for things like that. You wouldn't want to put them everywhere. You wouldn't want to put them in hard to find places. You would want them near high, you know, yeah. You, so I do think that, uh, we can, I can bring this up at ELT. The master recreation plan is going to be updated this year or so. I think they have started putting together the RFP for that. That might be an opportunity, but to have just a bike centric look at it, we might need to ask some of our local advocates for some recommended ideas. But, um, you know, it's, it's an, it's a new day in Peachtree City.
Well, and especially with, with the continuing growth of, of e-bikes.
Yes, oh, yes, good point.
With, with Pedego opening up in town and things such as that, I mean.
You see them everywhere now.
I, I have a Trek bike and I don't think I've been on my bike in probably three or four years because I'm tired of riding up and down hills all the time. Now with an e-bike, I may go ahead and, and do a little more riding. I hate to admit that, but it's true. But I think we, you know, where there's opportunities within the parks, within certain areas. And again, I haven't rode the bike in, in a while out, so, you know, I'm not sure exactly what's available out there in those areas. But, you know, I think it would be good from, like you said, a recreation view, you know.
Recreation and transportation, you know, just like our paths, it kind of crosses two worlds. So, um, I will bring that up.
And it has to make sense because, you know, one of the things in, in just, I'm, again, I'm looking at it right here is there are certain locations where you're probably not going to be riding your bike. I'm probably not going to ride my bike to Home Depot and put a two by four on my back and drive it home. So restaurants, yes, I could see. Things such as that where, you know, unless you have a cart that you're pulling behind, and some people do, I've seen. But I, I could see certain locations where it'd be more prevalent to have, you know, bike parking and things such as that, so.
Well, you're talking about city-owned or publicly owned facilities near attractions like that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I will start sniffing around.
Okay.
Can we go back to, uh, three E point four real quick? I just wanted to talk about the pedestrian part. Okay, so it says that, you know, the circulation should be, the pedestrian circulation should be part of the overall development of the corridor, of, of the corridor right there. So again, that's, again, the way that I'm interpreting is saying like, hey, you should, you know, you don't have to do this, but if you, but we recommend it. But then the next part then says, if, if you do do that, then the areas where it's crossing roadway and things like that should be highly visible from that? Should we change it to shall?
I, I like to see that as a shall. It, I mean, it should be part of the overall thinking of the development is-
See, highly visible or raised crosswalks shall be provided.
Pedestrian circulation, yeah.
Again, it still offers, again, with that first should, the option of doing that, or the recommendation to do it. But saying, if you do do that, then you have to do this.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, and then appropriate signage must also be provided to identify the crosswalk. Okay. Okay?
Okay.
Good, thank you. And three E five, we expanded upon public art. We added some specific examples of, in words, murals, sculptures and artistic structures. And then we added quite a few photographs showing both existing and neighboring, um, features either in the city or nearby.
So this goes back to when we had one of the original designs for the gas station off of Rockaway with the murals.
Uh huh.
Um, and what we could agree and what we, or what we could say is good and not good, um, from an art standpoint. But if, kind of in the back of my mind, I keep going back and say, well, since we can't say anything, do we need to have a group set up that basically is quote unquote, kind of an art commission? Because what is going to regulate? These are great, I, I like these. Um, I was just in Walmart yesterday evening and looked up going, and they have a beautiful mural in Walmart of Peachtree City. And I said, that's wonderful, that's great. But at what point does that go a different direction? And it's great to say, well, my view of art is different than yours, but it has to be something that's good for the whole community. And we really don't have anything set up that way, do we?
We don't.
And if we're going to be encouraging more artwork and sculptures and things like that, do we need to think about that?
There are some cities where that particular entity is actually housed in the CVB because art is such a tourist, tourism attraction. Think of the horses in Noonan or the cows in, no, it's horses in Kentucky. Sorry, who, what does, what does Noonan have? They've got the painting, they have horses as well.
Horses, cows.
It's a different thing.
Little, little bit of everything.
Yeah, yeah. So, but, um, and people travel to take pictures with them. And, and they become sponsors, so do I, there are definitely opportunities. It hasn't been discussed at this point. So far, we haven't really had, I mean, I hate to say it, but we haven't had a problem. And so usually a lot of times, solutions follow the problem, but, um-
But do we want to get in front of it at this point? As like I said, I, I love, you know, the murals and everything. I mean, I know there was a mural on the wastewater treatment there and, and, you know, had a local-
Well, and there's some mural-
Had a local person with, with murals do it. And I think it's, you know.
In some of the tunnels too, entrances to the tunnel.
Sun of the tunnels also, exactly. So I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, is there an opportunity to embrace that? And like I said, maybe it's through the CVB that that's kind of grown and just-
That was just one idea, I don't mean to.
Maybe you want to create a parking lot, um, you know, and put this on the parking lot for-
Put it on the wish list.
Yeah.
I have a running wish list.
I have a question, and this doesn't need to be specific to Peachtree City, but can you give an example of like when it's been a problem? Or in other areas or what kind of things, like what kind of things are we thinking about?
I mean-
Like this is too much.
You been to Philadelphia?
No, I'm just kidding.
I'm not.
I, I was going to say, there's, in some places where there's a lot of decline, you may end up with certain people who view things to be artistic, like toilets in their, in their front yard. And they'll put, I mean, I've seen a place that had two hundred toilets in their front yard. And they filled them with plants and all kinds of things, but can you imagine that's your neighbor? So, I mean, yes, there are definitely plenty of examples where art has raised some vigorous discussions in communities. You know, there was one in, I don't, can't, I just remember the picture of it, so I don't know exactly where it was. But it was a gaming store where, and they had put a beautifully done rendering of a highly violent game on the side of their two-story tall building. So there, there can be examples where things are pushed a little bit. And sometimes they're pushed for that purpose. But yes, well, we will put it on, on that wish list. But, but also more than that, bring it up and, and talk about these things to my, to the executive team.
I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunities, you know, we have a lot of wonderful areas. Would be nice to have maybe some, some different things out there.
I think it'd be cool too, if we even had some competitions.
Yeah.
And gave grants to, yeah, I could have a lot of fun with that, sorry.
It, it just, like I said, that, that's just what popped in my mind as I was looking through the, and again, what we have is, is wonderful. But, you know, do we need to really just watch? Especially if we're going to be pushing more of it and say, hey, you know, this is, this is something we want to see. Well, how, how do we want to see it? So.
Very good. So three F was about service areas. This is, um, garbage disposals or, um, rubbish bins, those types of things. We didn't make any changes to this. Make sure your HVAC is out of sight or landscaped and, and pretty. These are also very typical language from the city ordinance. Then, we're ready, going into part four, the design concepts. The very first one, um, listed out what kinds of plans were required. And they made it sound like they were required every time. We added some caveat language that basically said, if you're proposing public spaces, then a, a land, a schematic landscape plan is required. Or if you're proposing specialty lighting, then a lighting plan is required. Cause we don't normally require those kinds of plans for development review process. And you can ask Laura how sometimes things get thrown at you, you're going to revert back to your normal process.
Are those terms clearly defined, public spaces and specialty lighting?
We don't have a definition section in this ordinance. But sometimes having that discretion and not having it so solidly helps us so that we can require those extra plans if we needed them. Okay, so, the next section, four B in particular, is all about the design styles. And if I had just put up the cut and paste, it, it would just be all red. And that's because everything got moved around. So I just wanted to give you guys an, a highlight or, or explain what was done. Really, the big idea here was that we split these building design section into two types. Everything that was existing was put into what's called the traditional two thousand and two style. And then anything that was new and proposed by the app, uh, by the consultant was put into this, what they call the updated twenty twenty style. So there are some elements that are required in both styles, and those are at the beginning. Those are things like, um, buildings shall utilize massing, art, special architectural features and changes in roof line to emphasize building entrances. Or buildings on street corners should be designed to address the street corner, engage the interest of drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists at the intersection. So those are kinds of generic requirements that no matter what building style you picked, you still had to comply with. Storefront windows must be transparent. Mirrored glass with a reflection greater than twenty percent is strongly discouraged. Windows or architectural elevations facing Georgia fifty-four should not be arranged so that solid portions of the walls do not exceed fifteen feet or, so that the wall does not exceed fifteen feet in length. That way it kind of gets broken up. So, um, is that clear? Any questions about those sections or those requirements? Nope, okay.
And there, there are like example images, I guess I didn't see.
Yes, there are some example images for the traditional and for the updated. So then the next section, this, even though it's all in red, again, this is language that was already in the ordinance. These are elements that just apply to the two thousand and two style. They shall be divided into a base, middle and top. They shall include a minimum eighteen inch high contrasting base along the entire frontage and sides. Gutters and leaders should be copper or painted OG, et cetera. So those sections, those were already in the ordinance. So those sections, those were already in the ordinance and they got moved into this style. And then here's the language for the updated 2020 style. So that the principal facade of all buildings shall utilize the updated exterior material palette. Facades may be divided into a base, middle, and top, or utilize architectural principles of contrast, juxtaposition, and material, materiality to create visually pleasing designs. They shall, they shall exhibit a sense of permanence and creative expression to create a combination of unique facades that express the specific retail brands while utilizing materials and accents to create a thread of consistency within each development. That way, we don't, we end up with some unique characteristics, but they still have to tie into what is around them. So that lovely space-aged gas station down by Rockaway, lovely idea, lovely, very cool design, but since it, if it were put in the middle of this, it wouldn't meet this intent because it doesn't have anything that ties it to the surrounding environment. Let me catch up on my notes here. In 4B3, we switched these. They, they used to require samples and encourage colored renderings, and we switched it so that it's like what we do today, which is we require color renderings and encourage samples. In today's market, sometimes it can be hard to find the exact samples, physical samples to give, although we still really want to see them because it can be very different what the sample looks like.
I, I would just add, at the time the conceptual site plan is submitted, just like it is in the, in the previous sentence, to make sure that you're requiring it at a very specific time. Otherwise, it's just, it's unclear when it's required.
Conceptual site plan?
Yeah. I think it's implied from the sentence previous, but it's not specifically stated.
Good point. I mean, it's one of those things that, when you look at it and deal with it all the time, you lose that perspective. We didn't make any changes to the next section, 4B4, about accent colors. The only, the changes that we made to the exterior materials was, we just added some more examples of, of types. They had said brick, cast stone, cementish lap siding. We had a tile, wood, painted brick, et cetera. And then we removed the last sentence because unfortunately, somewhere along the road, we no longer have those building materials downstairs, and so we don't want to make promises that we can't keep. 4B6, so this language is the original language in the ordinance, but what we did was make it only apply to that traditional design. So this is where, and we checked to make sure that all of these substances are still made. So Williamsburg hand, hand-formed brick by triangle in ports, in port's mouth or in that Williamsburg color. All of that will apply to that traditional style. Ephes color, mortar color, et cetera, et cetera. There was one correction down there under number one. It says, you can see, white is crossed out. The actual name of the color is Olympic range. I'm not sure where white came from. It's not white. It's a blue color. And then, so that all applies to traditional design. Then the next line is for updated style. So that the exterior materials shall blend and complement the traditional exterior building materials, but shall, may, we should probably say shall, uh, may. May also include painted steel and other materials as approved by planning staff. This is where we can get some of those, and then the next, I hope I put the picture, yes, good. And then the next page, we've got a bunch of samples of materials so that we can get some of those neat exotic hardwoods or different types of architectural metals.
So traditional design refers back to the 2002?
Mm-hmm.
And the updated design, is it 2020?
Yes.
Maybe the title should probably refer to that.
Updated.
2020.
2020.
Style.
Style.
And I think that first title is just missing a T in the word submittals.
Oh, that's why it's underlined. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm a terrible speller. I don't know what I do without word check.
It's two of us.
Okay, so then, so now we've talked about the, that palette of materials. Let's move on to 4B5. That's about roofing. We did make some changes here. We removed all of the specific colors. You'll see, that's kind of a theme whenever the, through the ordinance, is removing those specific colors, that burgundy, that Hartford green, dark bronze. But we didn't want it to be a free-for-all. And so we took language from the current ordinance, and that's where we get that not be high-intensity colors or fluorescent colors. That's straight from our current ordinance. That way, we're not opening Pandora's box. We also added some caveat language there that says that it must be, what does it say? Existing, it, it should be substantially the same or equal to existing shingle roofs in the guideline area. Again, so we don't end up with, which may be lovely, a teal-blue roof, but not, not appropriate in this particular area of the city. The other thing that we removed is this funny little section about roof type. Basically, if a building was under 5,000 square feet, it required a pitched roof, which is like the opposite of urban. You know, pitched roofs are perfectly appropriate in a rural area or an area that you want it to appear residential, and you want everything to kind of have that more residential appearance. But in, I mean, this is supposedly our pedestrian-friendly downtown-ish kind of area of the city. Having pitched roof requirements seemed counterintuitive to everything else that this ordinance was doing. What are y'all's thoughts on that?
Are there any buildings in that overlay district that are less than 5,000 square feet?
Yes, yes. In fact, Starbucks and the Chipotle.
And they, they have pitched roofs?
No, they don't. Caught us. However, the Napa, I think that it, it's got that funny Mansford roof type of design. And that was really popular. You know, think of the McDonald's. Remember when they used to have those kind of roofs? Okay. I'm trying, we're almost, we're getting there, guys. We're getting there. So 4B6, this was a minor change to clarify the language. We just, that last sentence seemed to be a runoff, run-on sentence. And so we added shall and be just to add a verb in there. And then we updated the photo examples. Here is another design, here's another area where we removed the specific colors for canopies, 4B7. They were originally only allowed to have canopies in forest green or burgundy or this black color. And so we got rid of that altogether. And if, if you're, and if you, out there in the avenues, you'll notice that there are several that, before Robin, were different colors than these. So I don't think it'll be, create any kind of conflict with what's out there.
Are we just limiting it to canvas? Because I'm thinking you could have metal awnings. You could have wood awnings. You could have.
That's an oversight. Absolutely. You're right. Okay, so.
In fact, I'm actually a little more favorable to not having canvas than having canvas, just with all the issues with canvas, but.
So it could be canvas or architectural canopies. That's what those lovely metal ones might come out. Okay. Thank you for catching that. Yeah, in fact, even the pictures show architectural canopies. 4C is about landscaping. So I know that you had mentioned you would wanted to talk about this. The only changes that we made were, there was a numbering error. At the very end, at 4C6, it, it accidentally numbered, created an extra number, so we fixed that. But what were some of your thoughts?
Well, and I've done, I've re-landscaped every house I've ever owned. And one of the things that, you know, as you're doing it, people always look at, well, I'm going in and my plants are one gallon, they're three gallons, and because they're small, I need a ton of them. Not thinking down the road that these are gonna be four feet, five feet, 10 feet high and wide. So one of the concerns I have, and I actually kind of brought it up with the new, when we were looking at the landscape design in the new Advance Auto. Advance or Autozone? I can't remember which one it is right there by Mavis.
Advanced Auto Parts.
Okay, Advanced. I think it's Advanced.
I think so.
Was right there in that section. You know, the speed limit goes from 45 to 55. It's very, sometimes it's very hazardous with, with people turning into whether it's Miles Hardware or whether it's the, the Advanced Auto Parts or, you know, the old shops there at Governor's. And just, again, the line of sight, being able to see when those shrubs, bushes, plants, whatever, are mature. And that's been one of my concerns, and I know a lot of people, I, I see things posted of, you know, trying to pull out, and I'll use Walmart and Home Depot's example, trying to pull out and literally have to pull out into the street.
Just hope they're not going too fast.
Right, to be able to see. And that should not be. And those plants there have grown too big. And that was my question as to, you know, what remedies do we have to say, hey, you know, this line of sight has to be maintained from a safety standpoint. And as we go forward and looking at landscaping design, really taking, taking that into consideration because everyone always says, well, and I think I asked the, the landscape designer at the time, I said, well, you know, have you taken it, this into consider? Well, the, the property owner will go ahead and make sure they're trimmed and, and take care of it. And I'm like, well, that's great to say, but that's not how it works. We would love that to be the case.
Well, and that's, that's where code enforcement comes in, and we will definitely, because I had noticed that as well about Walmart, but.
But it's something just as we go forward.
But it wasn't anything specific in the ordinance?
It wasn't to that, but it was just an overall question of, of, as we're putting these design standards in place, you know, making sure that we just don't think about the, the short term of, well, here it is, but really looking at the long term. And, you know, I know we, and I know Laura does, you know, hey, well, the tree's gonna get 30 feet by this, and, and that's, and that's great, and it's good information. But, but it's even more important that sometimes we do really think about that as to, you know, hey, this is going in, and this tree is gonna be 40 feet, and it's gonna be 30 feet wide, and it's right on a corner.
You're not gonna be able to see around it yet.
And can you actually see the traffic? Can you see the sidewalk? Can you see certain things like that? I think SMC3, when we were looking at the landscape design, and they were doing that back corner, that was one of the questions that was brought up as well, you know, are you gonna plant some, well, they're gonna plant, well, there's that area right there going into. And how big is this tree gonna get? You know, is it gonna grow over the street? You know, do people need to walk through there? So I think we really need to take that into consideration, like I said, on the design side, but also as we're reviewing things, the landscape plans, too, so that really ties together.
It's good.
And then, of course, like you said, really making sure that it's taken care of from code enforcement.
Yes, yes. We're on that. We'll, we'll get on that.
We did want them to consider, if you'll notice, typically our, the canopy trees we require in the regular landscape ordinance is a minimum of a three-inch caliper. And in here, we're requiring no less than six inches, which is a very large tree.
That's big, yeah.
It's also very hard to find.
I was gonna say, probably really hard to find. So we're just wondering what y'all thought about that, and is that something we should consider updating?
We didn't want to lower the standards, but we also need to be practical. A six-inch tree nowadays, I mean, there was some time after the Great Recession where there were several, you know, where you could really find them. But nowadays, nobody holds on to a tree that long.
Yeah, it's tough to find them.
I'm seeing some nods, but then, how, how do y'all feel about making that no less than a three-inch caliper?
Fine with me.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go any less than, definitely not less than three.
No.
But, but I think if we say no less than, that gives an option. I, I think we can encourage larger caliber if, if they're available.
And they get extra credit? I mean, they get the extra inches for it?
Yeah, I, I think that'd be something. Sure.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
So going, going back to the, the line of sight issue, which Rina was talking about, there is a, there is a ordinance that code enforcement can already enforce. So that's, we don't need to put it in here, basically.
Right, right. So 4D is about lighting. Here, we just updated the language so that, if you remember, I mentioned last week, those lighting fixtures aren't made anymore. In fact, that company was bought out. And so what I did was, I removed that specific lighting technology. For example, it brought up metal halide fixtures. Well, nowadays, everybody's going to LED, and metal halide is going, sad, sadly, actually, because I think it's a better light. But they didn't ask me. So we removed that specific lighting technology. And then those series of, of fixtures, we changed it to what is current today, but then we added some language in there that said, basically, anything that is a full cutoff style that directs the light downwards is a suitable replacement. So in case in the future, that particular style is no longer manufactured, then at least the purpose of that is being, the performance measure is being met. And that we had to do that with all the different kinds of, uh, street lighting, parking lot lighting, all of the fixtures, they just don't make them anymore.
I think one of the things we need to take a look at, and, and I don't know if we would be able to put it in here, because you don't want to limit it, but as you start, start taking a look at LED light temperatures, color-wise, you can go from the warm to the, it's, it's blinding bright white. So I think we need to.
You know, that might be a good discussion during the UDO, too.
Yeah, you know, we, we want something that's gonna be putting out light. But, you know, in certain places, you may want more of a warmer.
Like a 2,700 or 3,000 versus a 5,000?
5,000 where it's a blinding white, so.
Okay. Here's where, in 4D3, this is where they had that lighting table. It was exactly the same as in our ordinance, and I'm always getting nervous when there are duplicates like that. I would much rather refer to the ordinance, and so that's what we did here, is we removed the table and referred to the ordinance.
Should we put the section number in, just Scott's earlier?
Um, it's gonna change with the UDO.
And, and for other lighting types, 4D4, you said no changes. One of the things we have, ATM service stations restricted to no more than two 320-watt recessed lighting fixtures. With LED, that 320 watt doesn't mean anything.
It doesn't mean anything, but at least it's no more than.
Yeah.
Because they still use watts. That's what my thought was.
Okay. I'm just, you know, we're, we're looking at two 320 watts, no more than, I mean, it may be one, one.
Eight watt.
Eight watt LED. So, again, I think we don't want to limit now because of new technology. But I'm not sure exactly how we.
Well, that's where.
Maybe phrase that a little different.
You don't, do you not think that it says, it says no more than two 32 watt light? Light fixtures for, see, I don't, I don't know.
Say, no more than two light fixtures, you know, not excessive of how many watts, right?
Yeah, that's why I'm kind of stuck because.
Okay.
I mean, as we're saying different lighting and, and color temperatures and things like that, and bringing it up to current LEDs, that brings me back to just, like you said, metal halide or, or Halon or, or, you know, whatever type of lighting more so than LED, because most of the things now, it's, it's gonna be LED.
In fact, well, I don't want to skip ahead. 4E starts getting, the E section is about signage. And so E1 through 6, we did not make any changes. And so E one through six, we did not make any changes. This is where it defines the different kinds of signs. We didn't add anything here about the edge sign. Um, it defines different kind of tenants and gives them a maximum number of square foot depending on the size of their rented space essentially. And it gives some, um, requirements. Oh, but then four E seven, so I copied four E six says some tenants can have up to forty-eight inch tall letters. But then four E seven comes in and says, if you use a sign cabinet, it has to be thirty-six inches high by a hundred and forty-four inches. Well, that's very specific and it won't even fit the letters of, of what an anchor is allowed. So removed, I'm proposing to remove that section there so, because it's just, it's conflicting and it's unnecessary. It's duplicative. Then, um, the next one says that they, the, that cabinet, if they use that cabinet, it has to be matte and almond color. Well, we've got buildings, in fact, we're dealing with JM Pools right now. Their building isn't, uh, cream stucco. It's actually a terracotta stucco. So if they put this cream background on it, it would make it stand out instead of blend in, which is the purpose of, of that cabinet. And so we added this language or the color to match the building that the cabinet is affixed. And then here's, we're talking about, um, LED lights. They said that if you used lighting, it had to be neon and it had to be white, yellow, red or green. And we know that LED is the choice and it comes in every color now, so we removed that. Any questions before we move on from there? Nope?
So do we need to discuss the edge sign?
Well, it's funny, you're ahead of me. I was gonna say.
Well, you said we made it, so.
Yes, well, this is it, but then at the bottom of that, you see, sort of. Because we do, we do need to ask, I do need to get clear direction from you guys is whether or not this is, you know, this is a recommendation from the consultant saying that this is a kind of design element that's being used more often now and maybe we should consider it. And, um, I'll tell you, my first instinct is if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But I get it. The whole purpose of this ordinance and this update is to be to update so that we are, uh, addressing modern standards. And so my recommendation is if you all decide that this is something that you think would be appropriate in this area, that they do either a wall sign or an edge mounted sign, that it's not a both. And that we should limit those letters just like we do in the ordinance already, so that large stores that are over a hundred and fifty feet in length can have taller letters up to forty-eight inches high. But those smaller stores, which is the majority of them, they're only twenty-four inches high. And that's very modest. I know it sounds, it sounds, you know, but remember when you put it far away and high up, it, it's, it's a very understated um, signage requirement, but it matches what we require for the wall. And so that is what, if you all decide that it's inappropriate in the area, that's what I was recommending. So how are y'all feeling? Other than we're almost through.
I think it's kinda harder to read really, like, it just doesn't stand out. It's, I mean, I don't know.
The bottom picture on the, on the bottom is actually from the Avenue's architect. They had wanted to do, um, edge mounted on an architectural canopy. And, you know, at the ti- we, we had to say, no, you can't do that. And they ended up painting, you know, friend's table on there instead, but, um, it is, it is something that people are, are looking to do.
I'm inclined to let him give people an option.
I, I wouldn't do both. It's one or the other.
Yeah.
It's definitely one or the other. I, I think, you know, it gives another design element, just to make things, give a little more option to them. Do we wanna look at the same size letters as what we have on the walls? Now that we're bringing that down, basically, what, maybe fifteen, twenty feet above sidewalk level? Do you need a four foot lettering on your canopy sign? Do we wanna reduce that down a bit if you're gonna have edge mounted? Max you can do is maybe three feet.
So thirty-six inches for the large and medium stores?
Because I mean, if you're talking four foot high lettering and it's fifteen feet above your head, do you need?
Yeah, that's true.
Four foot high lettering?
That's a good point.
So, and that gives them an option. If they want larger lettering, then go ahead and put it up on, on this, on the wall. If you want something that's down closer to, to the people, you can have it, but it's gonna have to be reduced size.
I think that's a good idea. Can I also, while we're on the topic of, um, the sizes, you, I think it was, um, Andrew that said something earlier about, do we have things that are already non-conforming or would we be making things non-conforming? The Avenue already has plenty of inline stores that has lettering taller than twenty-four inches. So I don't know if that's something we wanna consider eliminating or making larger at this point.
Just making them all thirty-six inches?
That seems like the, the fair option. There's already stuff larger.
Cause you know, they have, they have tenant turnover. And somebody's gonna come in and say, well, the guy before me had thirty-six inch letters. Why can't I have them?
Thirty-six for all seems good. My only comment as it relates to this, I seem, I, I agree with my fellow commissioners, but, uh, the one on top seems kinda hard to see.
Yeah.
The, the only thing that I would.
It's not a great picture.
Might add to any language that you craft around this would be, it has to be well lit, so it can be easily seen.
Clearly visible, well lit sort of thing. And that's one of the things I don't see in any of these pictures here is, is a type of lighting for that type of sign. So whether it's.
We wouldn't want it to be internally illuminated letters.
Oh, no, no. But you would have some type of either front mounted up on that shining, um, or, or something. Yeah, we don't want them illuminated, but.
Could be some cool shadows.
Yeah.
Um, well, it's gonna take staff a little bit of time to, um, draft something like that up. And I know Laura was hoping that we would have a chance to cancel our next meeting, cause we don't have anything else on the agenda. But I was wondering, since we are gonna be adding this new language in here and making some of those other changes that you guys had mentioned along, along tonight, if we could consider one more workshop on this item before it starts going to public hearing. How do you feel?
And you would just bring back all the recommend, recommended changes?
Yes, so that you could see how it's written. And make sure we got, we captured your comments.
And that's the thirteenth?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Link?
Yeah, I, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Before, before we finish, can I back up real quick to those sizes? Now that I'm looking back at this, there's really no reason for the section for inline tenants. It really would just be anchor and primary because, uh, oh, no, the, sorry, there's a not to exceed.
Yeah.
So there's the hundred versus fifty, but other than that, they're the same. One and a half calculation is the same. Okay, never mind. But I also wasn't suggesting that we change anchor to thirty-six from forty-eight. That'd be taking away. I don't, I haven't studied whether we've got some out there that are that large.
I think what we need to do is when, we need to draft this language up, make these changes, make sure, we need to go through what's already out there to see, make sure that it complies with it before we bring it back to them for their thoughts and review.
And then I was also wondering, do you really wanna keep that almond?
Staff hates that.
I, I really do, because they're.
They hate the different, they, they hate that the, the, um, cabinet has to be the same color as, or this almond color. They, and we do, we get a lot of people wanting that cabinet to be black or blue. And frankly, when, um, Hibbett Sport, no. Is it five and below? Five and below? Uh, this, they got through with a sign with the back color that was not, they want to eliminate that color requirement.
All together, cause there are actually a lot of signs out there that don't meet, don't meet that requirement.
Is there any downside to that? I mean.
Um, I mean, other than you lose some of the uniformity that you have out there. I, I don't know. I'll be honest, I don't know. Even I noticed that uniformity when I was, you know, what you notice is the size of signs. I think we all just assume, you know, everybody's brand and everything are all these different colors. We accept that. I don't think that, um, we've really noticed. If you, if you guys were to sit here and imagine the signs that you, you're not sitting here going, oh yeah, that one's got a cream background and a cream background and a cream. Those are just things that I don't, I think it was a level of requirement that was a little reaching.
It makes, it makes it hard to enforce new sign requirement of new sign requests when they're looking around going, well, that guy's got a red background, that guy's got a blue background. Why do I have to have one that's almond or one that matches my building when I really want one that's white, you know?
Well, I guess in my mind, I'm thinking if we're going with different types of signs, to try to allow more options, like the edging and there's not gonna be any uniformity in that, right? So I feel like, are you gonna choose one color? It, I mean.
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I guess I see some conflict in that.
Any other thoughts on that? We can, um, bring those changes for, we don't, what, um, we'll make those changes. We'll get you a copy of these changes before our next meeting and then our next meeting won't be so, um, we're not gonna, I wasn't planning on going through everything again, except just the areas that we've changed. Wow, you guys are superheroes in that book.
Got a couple small points.
Okay, yes.
Since, since we're gonna be rewriting things.
Yeah, yeah.
Picked up a couple spelling things.
Oh, please, spelling. You know me.
Sorry.
No, no, please tell me.
So I'm just looking here at four E seven, second to last paragraph. So there's a couple instances, so it says all electrical connections shall be enclosed in conduit, da, da, da. So as we get all the way down, you have all A capital L lowercase L. And then says all electrical connections shall be made by license, license is spelled wrong.
Okay.
Um, and then there was another one here. Oh, the next one, goose neck lighting fixtures shall be used to illuminate tenant wall. If you look at the sentence where it is all goose neck light fixtures, I'm sorry, all specialty, so it should be all specialty lighting must be approved prior to installation. So you got two spelling errors there.
Where was that? I missed that.
On the goose neck lighting?
Okay.
Yep, the last paragraph before four, four E eight.
Tenant wall signage shall be used.
So it's the second sentence?
Lighting.
Well, and here's another, here's another specific.
And that's the other question I was gonna ask. Does BK still make the sign star style goose neck lights?
Oh, you know what? I didn't check that one. Caught me. Okay. Yeah, let me check that one.
And same thing, wattage should be limited to a hundred and fifty watts.
Spelling, okay. Okay.
Four E nine window signage, last sentence opaque. Signage shall, just split that apart.
See, we really didn't get into signage. That's why we didn't catch any of this.
People ask me to spell check things and do that, I'll, I'll definitely redline stuffs.
Very good.
So I'll take a look at it as, I have a little bit of time this week. I've had somebody say, don't ever give me redline stuff again after I got done with it, so.
Oh, I think it's what, we need it.
I, I, I read newspapers or I read stuff on, on the internet and I automatically go to spelling errors or sentence structure errors in their writing.
Calling.
Drives me nuts.
Good, catch that. Thank you. All right. We, well, we made it. I really do appreciate your, cause this is, I mean, this was in the weeds, y'all. This is as in the weeds as it gets. And, and I know that, um, it's not always the exciting, most exciting thing. We forget that not everybody shares our passion, so I truly appreciate your dedication and sticking with it, with us. And all of the great contributions, all the great edits that you added. And then we'll. Anything else?
No. Um, anything else, Commissioner? Well, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
I'll favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.